Order the August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. I don't think I need to read the preamble thing anymore.
You do because it's remote.
You do.
But, I mean, it's the law. I don't know that we have to. I don't see that it's necessary. But, okay, it's just on our agenda. If you look at our agenda, this meeting, we're going to be doing hybrid. Can do both. We have remote and in-person attendance, so, and the applicable law is located on the agenda. So, let's call roll.
Sean Kevlin.
Here.
And Sean's appearing remotely. Thank you, Sean. When you do sign out, we'll note that you're no longer here.
John Simons.
Here.
Aton Goberg.
I'm here.
Chris Casores.
Here.
Okay, and we expect Mr. Boynton, but he's not here yet. Okay, all right. Fifty-sixth Academy Road, James Warden. Application for historic barn overlay district special permit under Article twenty and Article ten, Section one ninety-five, ten point seven, North Andover zoning bylaw. Applicant proposes use of the nineteen fifty cow barn for prototyping with solar boats and ceramic art. Project is located within the residential three zoning district. Mr. Warden, good evening. How are you?
Hello.
Can you just state your names and tell us where you live?
Yep, James Warden, eighty-four Academy Road, North Andover.
Okay, for the record, I was not an attendant at the last meeting. Sorry about that. I know there was some talk about having me come on. It was three in the morning in Istanbul, so that was not happening. But, we are here now, and I have watched the meeting so that we now have enough people that can vote on the permit. So, is there anything you want to add from last meeting?
I don't think so.
Okay, any members of the board have any questions or comments?
No.
The only thing I would say is, I would like to see if before you start work, you take some pictures of what it looks like now, and then what it looks like when you're done, because this is the first permit that we're issuing under this particular bylaw. And I think if we had some before and after pictures, it would be a good example for people to look at if they want to do it in the future. I think that would be nice for us to kind of have. And say, okay, this is kind of what we're envisioning if you want to go under this bylaw. Nothing that's required, but I think it would be nice.
Yeah, that's fun.
Okay.
Tend to do that.
Awesome, all right. Can we get a motion to close the public hearing as to the Historic Barn Overlay District Special Permit?
So moved.
Motion made to, I'm sorry, before I do that, any members of the public want to make a comment? Gene, any public comments that's come in? Okay, motion made to close the public hearing. Can I get a second?
Second.
We'll do a roll call vote. Sean?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I vote yes. Sean, Sean, Sean twice. Chris?
Yes.
Okay, public hearing is now closed. We'll now review the draft, but draft decision. Gene, you incorporated the hours that were requested?
Yeah.
See, that's the number six.
Yeah, it was the number twenty-one.
And twenty-one, okay, great.
And I'll add a special condition we got in the pictures.
No, it doesn't need to be a condition.
Oh, okay.
No, 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 that's just a request.
Okay.
Doesn't need to be a condition. I'm just, I just think it would be something that would be nice.
And we can just send those to Gene?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I just think it would be like on our community development website, or we can have, it would just be nice to have something that if the next person comes and asks about it, to have some pictures of, this is what we're looking at. It's not a requirement. I don't think we have a requirement. Okay. Okay, can we get a motion to approve the special permit?
As written.
As written, yeah.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Sean?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
How about yes? Chris?
Yes.
Okay, that's approved. All right, thank you for working with us in this process.
Thank you very much.
It's approved. Sean, are you sticking on, or is that it for today?
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta jump. Thanks.
Thank you, Sean.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. For the record, Sean has left the meeting. Okay. All right, next. One eighty-nine Willow Street, Vincent Grasso. Gene?
Yep, so late today, through his attorney, Vincent Grasso has requested to withdraw without prejudice in order to follow through on the appeal processes that he's pursuing.
Okay. All right, so matter still remains before, in a various state of appeals and court proceedings, and does not look like it's going to get to the board for any type of information or hearing, or further hearing anytime soon. The applicant has asked to withdraw without prejudice, and I think we should honor that request. If and when, if it does get ever through all of these appeal processes and comes back before us, we'll be happy to take it up again. So, I would ask for a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that is withdrawn without prejudice, okay. Bond release, fourteen fifty Osgood Street, Hillwood Enterprises LP, request for partial lease of the eighty thousand dollar performance bond associated with site plan parking common driveway. Applicant is requesting seventy thousand dollars be released.
All right, so the required engineer certification letter and as-built plan is included in your packet. Condition fifty of the approved decision requires a post-opening traffic study to evaluate operations of the site and compare the trip generation and operations of the proposed facility to the actual post-opening trip generation and operations. The timeframe to conduct that traffic study is twelve months after Amazon opened for full facility capacity. So that opening was in May, and so that study is anticipated next May. The results will be presented to the planning board, and so my recommendation was to only release seventy thousand of the eighty thousand dollar bond and hold ten thousand until that study is completed.
Okay, and that study is related to trip production, right? They estimated a certain amount of trips per day, they're going into the facility, and they're going to study that.
And that's specific to the four entrance exit drive aisles.
Okay, now, we did receive a comment from Alyssa Konig, so I'm going to just read that. It says, hello, Ms. Enright and the Planning Board, my name is Alyssa Konig, I live at twenty Methuen Ave, I hold an elective position, but I write as a private citizen. Although the planned agenda item does not include the entire bond release, as there was a holdback to the traffic study, I'm requesting a lesser amount be released pending further traffic concerns that may not have been foreseen. Every day at about five thirty, traffics at a near stop from Amazon down Osgood Street and down Sutton Street on the airport side toward the four ninety-five on-ramp by Amazon workers being released from work. These workers prevent residents from entering and leaving side streets and homes off and on of, off, off of and/or on Sutton Street. This includes my street, Methuen Ave. My street is on the airport side of Sutton Street. I am unable to turn off my, on or off my street between five thirty until about six thirty every day. I am blocked. The workers will inch forward and refuse to let me out to turn from Methuen Ave onto Sutton Street. If I am able to squeeze through to turn left while being honked at and yelled at, my view is blocked from seeing traffic coming from the opposite direction, creating unsafe turning conditions. It also happens if I'm coming up Sutton Street from Main Street and attempt to take a left onto Methuen, I am blocked from turning onto my street, and the workers will continuously inch forward to prevent me from turning. It has happened on numerous occasions to me, my family members, and to my neighbors. One neighbor has already had an accident with an Amazon worker while they were turning onto the street off of Sutton Street. The workers have been unnecessarily rude about the situation. Traffic has been a hassle and inconvenience. Traffic on Sutton Street during this time is extremely slow, if not a complete standstill, and the residents are intentionally being prevented from entering and exiting their homes. This so happens to be the same time many residents are attempting to return home from work, and with fall sports resuming, families would be trying to get kids to practice this at this time. This seems to be an unforeseen and unintended consequence of the Amazon facility. I suggest a traffic study and remedy to be evaluated prior to a bond being released or there being a gradual holdback. Thank you for consideration. Sincerely, Alyssa Konig, twenty Methuen Ave. So, it's definitely a valid concern. I did speak with Alyssa, who was also a former planning board member, and Gene pointed out to me that there is, I think, a good avenue to deal with that issue better than the bond release. So there's actually, as part of the agreement between the town and Amazon, there was an agreement, and I'll read this. There was an agreement as part of the, that says, "One year after the date of issuance of the certificate of occupancy, Amazon shall make a contribution to the town in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars for a traffic mitigation study and improvement necessitated by the traffic generated by the full use of the project. As used herein, a contribution shall mean any gift deposited pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, into a separate account with the town's treasurer for the town's expenditure without further appropriation for the purposes described herein. To the extent that a traffic mitigation study is necessitated by traffic generated by the full use of the project is also required by the decision, special conditions number fifty and one sixteen. Then the planning board or planning director's written acknowledgment of Amazon's completion of the traffic mitigation study shall constitute satisfaction of this condition as further contemplated in Section one point one of this agreement." So, this, the agreement between the town and Amazon really directly contemplates the situation that Alyssa is raising, and a hundred thousand dollars towards that. Our bond is not really as specific towards that. Really, the conditions are actually more towards the interior and the trips. And I don't think the traffic study that is being suggested in fifty and one sixteen would really fully delve into what's, what's being requested. So I think it's a, our better course of action is to use this hundred thousand dollars that should be coming May?
May of next year.
Next year. I would encourage Amazon and our town officials to maybe talk earlier if it's already causing a problem, and maybe going to cause a problem into the fall, or this requires it one year after the date of issuance. But I don't see that there's anything that would prevent it from being started sooner. So, to the extent that we don't have a lot of upset residents and a lot of traffic, it might make sense to start studying that now and look at, especially in the fall with school coming back. It might be a good time to at least start that. So, I would encourage people to start doing that sooner rather than later, but I don't think we should make it a condition of our bond release. So I think Gene's suggestion of releasing or seventy thousand is being requested, and that makes sense. Keep some back in case we need to do a traffic study for the interior and the trip, the trip calculations. Thoughts? Does that make sense?
It's good with me.
Makes sense?
Yeah, no, I think that's a very good idea. I think your point of maybe getting in front of it a little bit clearly makes sense as well. I mean, I believe it is as she described it, but I'm trying to intuitively understand it, given that, and Peter and Gene, you may be the best ones, is the number of cars is far less than in the old days. Did they have exactly the same problem in the old days?
The old days, Western Electric, my understanding is those twelve thousand workers there, where Amazon has thirty-five hundred.
Yeah.
So significantly more. They had a traffic cop actually at the lights at, I think, seven thirty and three thirty in the afternoon, seven thirty in the morning, that actually let the traffic out onto Osgood Street, and it continued down Sutton Street. I mean, it was just, it was a known shift change time, and there was certainly a lot of traffic on Sutton Street then. This, to be honest, is the first time this concern's been raised to me. The only other call I've received we got in Amazon is the tractor trailer trucks. On occasion, there's one in the middle school area on one twenty-five when they're supposed to take a left out of the site. So somebody's coming from a different destination and traveling north on one twenty-five. I think I've had three calls since they opened. I mean, they were on a temporary CO for months ahead of the May full CO. But this is the first I'm hearing, so obviously I'll certainly watch it more and observe what's going on in that hour. If it's as bad as what's being described, I mean, it should be really evident just driving by that site. But I wanted to just add to Aton's comment, that was one condition. Also conditioned was a one hundred thousand dollar payout to the town thirty days after the CO, and we've already received that hundred thousand. It's sitting in an account, and it's to be used for post-construction traffic mitigation equipment. So if the study ends up saying that maybe, you know, flashing a light, some type of new technology at a light, they funded a hundred thousand dollars towards mitigation equipment already sitting in the account.
And there may be easy solutions too. I mean, traffic study we need to do, but, I mean, if everyone's, instead of everyone getting out at five thirty, if you could have, so I'm at five fifteen and five forty-five, or five and six. I mean, there seem to, there probably some, if people just sit down and talk about it, there are probably some pretty easy solutions that you could come up with. So I think people just need to come to the table. So I definitely encourage anyone who is experiencing any of these traffic issues to let your select board members know, to contact Gene or our, it's the town manager's office, just so people can kind of hear about it and then get to, get to talking about it. The only way we know is if people tell us about it.
Yeah.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the release of seventy thousand dollars of, unless, is there anything, any Hillwood want to add? No? Yes, no? Good. Okay, can I get a motion to release seventy thousand dollars of bond from the eighty thousand dollar bond for fifteen, fourteen fifty Osgood Street?
So moved.
Motion made, can we get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that's approved. All right, for the record, Mr. Boynton has joined us and voted on that. Good to have you here.
My apologies for being late.
It's okay. We did do the permit for the one you were refused on since you weren't here. That worked out nicely. So we did that, and that's been approved, okay? We also did-
Just to ensure that I was recused.
Yes.
Sean's actually on vacation, but he jumped on and we took it first, so let him go get his vote.
Yep. And one eighty-nine Willow Street was withdrawn without prejudice. And that's all we missed. So, okay, so we've done fourteen fifty, we've done one eighty-nine Willow Street. Let's do three thirty-five Salem Street, JCE Properties Development LLC. Application for a water, this is a continued public hearing. Application for watershed special permit under Article four, Part five, and Article ten, Section one ninety-five, ten point seven of the zoning bylaw to authorize construction of a new single-family house, infrastructure and site grading on an undeveloped lot within the non-discharge zone and subsurface drainage within the non-disturbance zone of the Watershed Protection District. Property is located in the R three residential zoning district. This is a continued public hearing that opened on July sixteenth, is that right?
Yes.
July sixteenth. For the record, I was not here on that date, but I have watched the meeting and signed an attestation that I've done so, so I can vote on that. Okay, Gene, why don't you tell us a little bit where we're at?
Yep, so there was some discussion at the last meeting regarding the A and R plan that was approved. It was approved in November of two thousand twenty-two. It's included in your meeting packet. Subsequently, the applicant went for, to the ZBA for a variance for contiguous buildable area. That variance is on your screen. The hearing date with the ZBA, the last hearing date was June thirteenth, and the decision was timestamped into the clerk's office on June twenty-sixth. Therefore, the variance has expired. Variance is a good for one year. The, per the zoning bylaw, if rights authorized by the variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the grant, they shall lapse and may be reestablished only after notice and a new hearing. And the motion made at the Zona Board of Appeals hearing was to grant the variance request under zoning bylaw sections related to contiguous buildable area to allow the construction of a single-family home on a vacant lot, specifically allowing contiguous buildable area to be thirty-three hundred and fifty square feet less than required. Additionally, there's a note on the variance itself that restates essentially what the zoning bylaw says, so. Note number three, generally, A, if the rights of the authorized, the rights authorized by a decision granting a variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the grant, then such rights lapse and may be reestablished after notice in a new public hearing pursuant to Mass General Law Forty-eight, Section ten. So I've confirmed with the zoning enforcement officer that a new application for a variance and a new hearing is required. Other than that, since the last meeting, the plans have been revised to address the stormwater peer reviewers' comments, and the review has been completed. Plan revisions included a note added to the plan stating that prior to any land disturbance commencing, the developer shall physically mark the limits of no land disturbance with tape signs or orange construction fence so that workers can see the areas protected. A separate limit of work is shown at the front of the site and with the existing trees out front. A note's been added to the plan for the existing field stone wall along Salem Street to remain, excepting one four-foot section to allow for the house walkway to connect to the town sidewalk. And there was a contour added to the driveway, and the O and M plan has been updated to reflect the additional information. And Jack Sullivan is here tonight to answer some of the questions asked at the last meeting, but I think more importantly, the discussion of the variance is-
We'll take that, but let me ask before that, Gene, where do we stand? So I heard there was a lot of discussion about stormwater from coming off of other properties and how this might affect that. Where do we stand with our stormwater peer review and things like that?
So, he's met all the comments that she's made, he's addressed them. And one of the standards is that post-development can't be more runoff than pre-development.
Which is a standard.
It's a master-
Standard, standard, if you will. That's always one of our conditions.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so stormwater's been addressed in that sense, it has been peer reviewed. So, why don't we talk about the variance, because that's our first hurdle? What are your thoughts on that?
Sure. For the record, my name's Jack Sullivan, Sullivan Engineering Group. Can I just back up to the drainage for one second, and then we can go to the variance?
Sure.
Because I know there's some members of the public who have questions on the stormwater, who may speak after this. I'm tasked with managing the peak rate of runoff and the volume of runoff for this site. I modeled that on, based on a two, ten, twenty-five, and hundred-year storm event. The hundred-year storm event is eight point six inches of rain. In every scenario for the two, ten, twenty-five, and hundred-year storm, I've decreased the peak rate of runoff, and I've decreased the volume. Also, as far as a stormwater design, we want to do a low-impact design. So the entire roof area of the proposed house is captured in a subsurface infiltration system. And we selected materials on site that are low-impact, pervious pavers for the driveway and the walkways. In fact, some of the driveways, like in turf stone, which is an open paver that grass is allowed to grow out of. So we try to do a combination of traditional drainage with some low-impact design as well. As Gene said, it was peer reviewed. It was, it was approved by the review consultant.
Jeff, what is there now on site, if anything?
There's no control-
That acts as, so there's obviously pervious surface grass or pervious surface. Is there any type of stormwater management system there now, other than what's natural?
There's none. So, so with this case, we provide some pretreatment, so the water quality's going to be better. We deal with controlling the stormwater runoff. There'll also be deed restrictions on fertilizers, you know. So now there's more controls by this process. If this didn't go in front of the planning board, and it was just a A and R lot somewhere else in North Andover that didn't go through this process, you wouldn't see this intense type of design, since we're in the watershed. We know we're tasked with doing that. So there's a lot of controls in place that the planning board likes to see. As far as the variance, I'm here with the owner, Jim Urb, and Gene did alert me that it expired. Jim went in to meet with the building commissioner this week. Unfortunately, he's away this week.
Okay.
We feel that, that there's a possibility that he may have exercised within the year's time, but we don't, he couldn't talk to the commissioner, so we, we don't have that. No official building permit was ever issued, because we were going through a watershed process with you guys before a building permit could be issued. But early on in the process, Jim had met with the building inspector and was trying to see, he knew when the deadline was, and was trying to make an effort to move forward. You can speak to someone.
Yeah, my name is James Urb. I'm the owner of JCE Property Development. And that was my biggest concern when I first went and talked to Paul Hutchins, the building commissioner. Before we even made an offer, that it once, if we established a permit application or we establish some work on it, we actually have an electrical permit on the site. We have a temp pole already installed, inspected. We have power to it. Obviously, I've hired Jack Sullivan, and we've been going through this process for about three months. So, I mean, I think that we've done our due diligence as far as exercising what the variance called for us to exercise, what we could exercise, considering the time of the year when we, or the time and the timeline- considering the time of the year when we, or the time and the timeline in the variance when we purchased it. But Paul assured me-
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, sorry. Go ahead. No, continue, sorry.
Oh, yeah, no, and that was my biggest concern that I talked to um Paul about before he even made an offer on this property, is that, with that we wouldn't need to go for an extension, that we were basically exercising what we need to do to move forward on this variance.
Uh, what, and you bought it in, was it November? Did I?
Um, no, we actually, um-
Someone else. When did you buy it?
No, that was the property next door that was bought in November. Um, I want to say that we bought it in April.
Up this year?
Uh, April, April or May, uh, maybe May. And then we had talked to Paul and, and I had hired Jack's company actually right away. I actually had talked to Gene about it almost the same time. Um, and that's um where Jack had done the subdivision through the variance. Or I mean, subdivided the lot. That's why we ended up using Jack to uh continue the process.
Yeah, I think you, Gene, when was the application made under the watershed special program? Before, after the, the year mark?
Before.
You just got the plug, Gene?
Yeah, no, I took it out.
Okay. Okay, so-
I'll, I'll get the date.
Get the date. I don't think it's our place to adjudicate whether or not you, you have, your rights have been where that you've done enough to not need an extension.
Sure.
I think that's between, first between you and the building inspector and then if anybody want. If he gives us an opinion that, or, or our town council, if someone gives us an opinion that you've met your obligations, then we go with that. If they say you haven't met your obligations, then we go with that. You can, and you can, whoever wants to contest any of those things legally can. But I don't know that I'm comfortable enough to grant or deny anything without that. That's just kind of where I'm thinking just as overall. But why don't we also hear from any other um members of the public? And then we can discuss, I think we can discuss the merits of the project and the concerns, as well as what next steps we maybe want to take.
I guess, just an observation, I, I think to some degree the language that we put in our decisions is crisper than this language because this language is a little bit ambiguous where ours, ours is pretty clear.
I, but just on that point, I think the language that they're using is the statutory language. So I think the statutory language is ambiguous about exercising your right. I think it comes in statute.
I mean, my kind of simplistic interpretation is, no, there's no variance. They haven't got all their approvals, no planning board approval, no uh building permit approval. How can you say you acted on it other than you tried? I mean, because you could wait till the day before the year is up, file an application, say, look, I done it. I mean,
I, I, I-
You know, so-
I haven't looked at the case law.
But again, uh, I will defer to town council and to the building inspector because that's fair, but my-
Well, I just want to chime in on that. So we wouldn't actually be able to get a building permit until we get a planning board approval.
Right.
So that's the stipulation.
Well, yeah, I know that, but your, the, the point is variance was supposed to be acted on within a year and you haven't gotten any of those approvals within a year, so I think it's void. But that's my opinion, so. And I'm not the one to make the decision here, so you gotta go to the building inspector and the town council and defer to them.
I think the key is the word exercise. What does that actually mean? Does that mean you have to have all your permits in hand, which is a very reasonable interpretation? Or does it mean you have to take steps such as filing a permit that you need to get in the process? I don't know the answer to that. Honestly, you would've been better off just filing for an extension, because why not?
But I was told I didn't need to. So, I mean-
I, I'm just, I'm not saying, we weren't here and I'm not saying whether you got good advice or bad advice. If I was your attorney, I would've told you, just file for the extension. Why not?
Sure.
But, so that's still kind of, that's a on-the-table issue. Let's talk about the merits you gave. We heard from Jack. Great. Heard about uh what you've done. We've heard that it's been peer reviewed.
They filed the application on June eleventh, if I can read that correctly.
Okay.
And what the variance authorized was the construction of a single-family home.
I haven't done any research on it. I'm not sure it's our place. But, um, okay, so there, we, we did hear everyone's comments last time. Uh, but if anyone has comments that they want to reiterate, questions, other points that they'd like to make now, you're more than welcome to do that. Gene, did we have any that come, came in online or by email? I know there were last time, if there was one. Anything new?
No, but I would just add that in your packet is an email from Paul with the determination, as recent as just a couple weeks ago.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. Um, is there any members of the public that wish to make a statement or be heard or have questions?
If you guys are going to make a decision on an actual permit, yes, we would like to speak.
We're, let's put it this way. I, I doubt that we will make a decision on the permit today, but I'd rather hear from you now and deal with any issues because if we get a determin- let's say we get a determination that they meet with the building inspector, they do some research and the, the case law from the state says, if you file a, a permit application, that's enough to exercise your rights. The building commissioner looks at it and says, okay, we agree with you. You've exercised. Then we'll be back on the next one making a decision. So I'd rather hear the concerns now, rather than wait and then if we are to issue a decision, I'd rather have dealt with the concerns now. So, okay, so, yeah, come on. But I don't think we will today, but I-
Hi, my name's Melissa Mar. I'm at three twenty-seven Salem Street. Um, thank you for your time. I just want to recap what's occurred since the last meeting, whether it's relevant or not, I, I strongly feel it is. Um, after the last meeting, Mr. Urb, I mean, the bottom line is neither one of us were the owners of the previous, previous land.
You were, you were the one who bought the other property in November.
Three twenty-seven.
Yeah, okay.
Where obviously I did not do my due diligence, knowing where the plot plan was because I was led to believe by the previous owners about thirty feet from where it was. My fault, I own that. However, after we had the last meeting, I um came home the next day to thirteen boulders, three feet high, on the part of the driveway that belongs to Mr. Urb, which is a safety hazard. I've alerted the D P W. I've alerted uh the police and fire on this. D P W Town Engineer was out last week. Uh, he's looking into it. He feels as though it's a safety concern. I'm looking for something in writing to prove that. The police have put up signs for um a hidden driveway because it is a dead driveway there. At this point, seven and a half feet have been taken from the original driveway, which was twenty feet. Now it's twelve and a half feet on a dead driveway. I also was informed that the shrubs, I live, it's Appleton and Salem Street. The shrubs were about five feet high, that I just spent a fortune clearing them, only to learn last week that the previous owner was instructed by the D P W to take care of it because it was a safety issue. That safety issue was overlooked when the variance was issued. Um, and of course, the abutters not going to abut when they own both properties. So I have a real safety issue on my driveway at this point. You know, and I reviewed the meetings. Um, in the last, the meeting when this variance was approved, um, someone asked about the easement and the answer was, it's not our problem, it's Cicelli's problem. Um, so this, in my opinion, could have been a simple fix with the easement from a safety concern. If you're breaking lot one and lot two, given easement, you needed a hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage for that. There's absolutely no use that corner driveway for the, the, his lot. I feel as though the behavior was egregious, uh, to say the least, with thirteen boulders, that I've had seven vehicles hit, hit that and someone is going to get killed on that driveway. And then last week, when the gentleman learned, to my knowledge, about the variance expiring, I came home to a mailbox being relocated that was indeed on his property. Um, but it's my mail post, my mailbox taken, put in a cement bucket, and then taken more of the portion of my driveway, which was trespassed. The federal postal inspector will be investigating that. North Andover Police were made aware. Unfortunately, it's a state statute they can't deal with. So when this gentleman stood up here and said he's a reputable builder, the behavior does not stand for that. And then in regards to Gene mentioned, there were rocks, four feet of rocks that could be moved, removed. If I understand this proper, properly, that was done. Those rocks came from the rock wall, which brings me to, was that rock wall taken into consideration with this watershed issue? It's this historical rock wall that is being destruct, destructed. Um, so, and I have water in the bottom corner of my barn from the runoff for this. So I have some serious concerns for the safety of this and, um, you know, I'm, I'm a friendly neighbor. You know, I, I, you can ask anyone. I'm a friendly neighbor and this is not how neighbors act. So, that's all I have to say.
All right, anyone else?
James, do you have any comment for that?
Hi, uh, sorry. Nathan Stiles, Bobby Zehrath. We own the budding property on two forty Marble Ridge. We were here at the, the last meeting, but would like to reiterate our concerns as well as share some new ones.
So we're the property that's actually at the corner of Salem Street and Marble Ridge Road. So we're the ones, um, that's listed as the Morgans up there, but we're not the Morgans. We bought the property from them six years ago. Um, but we're the ones with that ponding area. So we're, we have actually the wetlands resource area, so we have an intermittent stream that flows in between, like all the, the houses on like Marble Ridge with us and be, and behind where Melissa is and then where the lot is. And, um, so we talked last time about the water issues that not only our property has, but the adjacent properties next to us, because I know Joe, who's next to us, wrote in a letter last time. And the O'Neills, who are at two seventy Marble Ridge, I think submitted a letter uh this time.
As well as video.
As a video of their water issues. And so that's just, just to introduce um ourselves again and just recap what we had talked about last time about our concerns about water.
Excuse me. Gene, can you just, oh, is that, okay, thank you, Gene.
So can I ask, I guess, so I listened to all of the testimony from last week and very much appreciate it. And I can understand that there is a current issue with water and runoff. So that doesn't seem to be contested. But the thing that we really are focused on is if a single-family house is put, where they're proposing with the stormwater that they're proposing, will it make anything worse? Because they're under no obligation certainly to make it better, right?
Right.
They, they could just not do anything on their property and you'd still have these water issues. If they build something, they can't make it worse, so we all agree on that. But if they comply with our bylaw and do not make it worse, that's, that's really the question that I'm, that I think we really mostly focus on. Um, so I think if there's, if you can kind of more specifically talk about what your concerns are so that we can ask the engineer and, and, and see if our peer review has addressed that. Because what our peer, what his, what his study says is that it doesn't make it worse. What our peer review says is they looked at it and they're experts and they agree that it doesn't make it worse. But you're living there on the ground, so that's why we're trying to meld all of those things.
So for us, being that we have that wetlands resource area, we always have to think about conservation. Um, we have to deal with them for everything, right? So an example that comes up to us is uh forty flagship drive, honestly. Um, so this is a, a property like, I think, four years ago or something. I got a, a special permit approved by the planning board. I know it's a commercial property. It's larger. It's, you know, so it's, it's different in scale to what's being built here. But, um, basically their erosion controls failed. Um, so there was a lot of damage to downstream wetlands. And, you know, a year later, downstream effects were being, um, you know, affecting, sorry, downs, like downstream properties, I'm sorry, that were being affected. And those downstream properties ended up getting violations because the developer at forty flagship wasn't doing anything to mitigate or wasn't working, whatever he was trying, wasn't helping. And so for us, we think about that and we're downstream because they actually are a little elevated from us. If you look at the properties of, on Salem Street to us, so we think about, we're at the end. We're at that pond area, so things can come down and affect us. So we're thinking of our property and protecting our property and so are the people behind us. And that is just an example that comes to mind. And so I just hope that the committee thinks about what the residents are saying, what the abutters are saying too. I mean, I'm not saying that that's exactly what's going to happen, but that's our concern.
Yep.
As property owners, we have to think about that stuff.
Yep, and that's why you're here and that's where it is. Jack, what kind of erosion controls are you proposing? Uh, and, and I know you've done a lot of work in the area in the watershed. What have you done in the past? What's been six, and what, what have you found to be successful?
Yep. So first thing is we're not proposing any work within a hundred feet of the wetland. So that, that, that's a critical thing to say. We're not pushing that envelope. We're not going up within twenty-five feet of the wetlands. So we're maintaining that, that natural hundred-foot buffer to the wetland that exists now. For our erosion control, we're, we're putting in stake silt fencing. And I did, when I did design this drainage system, we did go out and do a test hole on the site. There is a high groundwater table. Water was down forty-one inches. I showed that in my, my soil report. But we had good soils. We had sandy soils. Um, so I think combination of trying to, you know, we're not trying to, we're trying to keep this development project more towards Salem Street side. Um, we have the erosion control measures in place. As we talked about, it's not a heavily treed lot. It's basically grass. So we're not removing, um, you know, mature trees and things that can, can affect. If you start removing trees and then it rains, that can create problems. Maybe that's what happened on flagship. I wasn't the engineer on that project, but I, I heard stories about it.
Are there any plantings that could be added that would help with erosion control in addition?
Well, we're saving some of the trees out towards the front. Jim will end up doing some landscaping around the house anyways, like residential scale landscaping.
So what I'd ask you to think about is if, hearing these concerns, if there are some others, and I'm not saying go break the bank, but maybe think about if there are some other smaller things you can do to add just, just additional levels of protection. Because we can't decide it today. We need to figure out this variance issue. Uh, I'm not saying you have to do anything. We'll decide it. If you present us this project with this thing, we'll decide it based on this, but it might be worth just taking a second look to see if there's even just some items that you can do just to add, just to extra barriers more than just maybe what's the basics that are required.
I should note too, like typically, when I design a, a subsurface infiltration system, I provide an outlet. So in a large storm, it can flow out and then move towards a lower point on the lot. In this case, I had seen, I had been, I was the engineer for the Z B A when we went to the Z B A and the neighbors express concerns as well. So what I did, I don't have an outlet. I overdesigned the infiltration system to store and infiltrate the hundred-year storm event with no release out towards the abutter. So I, I made efforts, kind of like when I started with, with the stormwater, like, okay, we have an underground subsurface infiltration system, but also the materials we're using on site, permeable pavers. Like we made decisions here based on some of the comments I had heard at Z B A, trying to keep this project more towards Salem Street and away from, from the, the abutters to the rear. So we, we did make efforts in our design to, to make this as low-impact as possible.
Uh, and anybody here have other questions, comments? Do you guys have anything else that you want to?
Well, we actually did have some questions about the design. I mean, for one, the filtration system, the drainage field is different from a year ago. And the, the, that was at the Z B A meeting. Why did that change? Because it was actually horizontal, well, it's vertical now, but it was more horizontal and closer to the house. So I guess I-
Could you, um, sorry, going up these-
Sorry.
Let's, let's, okay, question? Jack, is there a change in the drain?
The drain, the drainage system did change in, in configuration. It got bigger. I had to increase the size of the drainage system. When we went to Z B A, they asked if I could put some drainage in um for the house that was shown. When I got into a detailed drainage analysis with the watershed permit, I said, I have to increase the size of this system. So I made it bigger.
But you changed the orientation too.
I changed the orientation because when you, to speak through the chair, but- I changed the orientation, cause when you, and to speak through the chair, but, um, I need to stay ten feet off a property line, I need to stay ten feet off a found, the foundation, so in trying to fit that, um, and still give, give, um, meet the setback requirements for stormwater management, that's why the configuration changed. It had to become bigger and I had to meet, meet those performance setbacks.
So, so one of the conversations that Jack and I had from the very beginning is that, um, so we want to build this house for a family and one of the things I want to take into consideration that someone wanted to put a pool in down the road, that filtration system wouldn't affect something that someone could put a pool, they would have to reconfigure everything, but just for future planning, this, when Jack and I had talked about the previous pavers and all of that stuff, just to enhance all of this water recovery so that, um, to minimize any excessive water to the lot.
And is this on sewer or septic?
It'll be on sewer.
Okay, alright.
And just to follow up what Jim said, if, if, if the owners came in and wanted to do a pool, we'd be right back in front of the planning board doing another watershed special permit.
That would be required, okay, um, other questions or comments?
Yeah, uh, so it looks like the, the house itself has changed since a year ago, it looks like you moved where the garage was as well as the driveway, can you comment on that, why you did that?
I think we tried to keep about the same footprint is what-
We, we did stay within the same footprint.
Yeah.
Can you say why you changed it though?
Garage was located in the front and then there was a, but there was a concrete driveway that was gonna be, if you look at the plans from-
Can you, can you bring up the, from, if you go back to the documents here, the, from the ZBA, um, at this meeting?
Uh, we can do it, but to be honest, for a watershed special permit, we're not really looking at the architecture or the, where the house designed, it's, for the, when we're, so just, and then this maybe just be an educational point, there are a lot of different types of permits that come before the planning board. There are special permits just to be able to build something of a certain use, there are permits because you're disturbing a certain amount of land, so it's a project of a certain size, and there are permits like this, which is in the watershed special permit, which our focus is really, this is a use that's allowed, right? A house is a use that's allowed in this zoning district, right? You're allowed to build a single-family house and that's sort of as Jack mentioned, if you built this single, same single-family house somewhere else in town that wasn't in the watershed, we wouldn't see any of this, it wouldn't come before us. Um, and if there were issues with stormwater and neighbors and things like that, it would be figured out between the neighbors. The reason it comes before us is because it's in a protected area and we're certainly mindful of how it affects neighbors and trying to, um, figure this out to make sure that it's appropriate. Our main concern in a watershed special permit is more global about how it could possibly affect the town drinking water and the town's water supply, that's really the focus, so that's why where the garage is, unless that really affects the water table or the, the filtration, we don't get into this, and that's more for the, the variance issue, so it's just, that's just more of a-
Thanks for that.
Who's responsible for what?
Very fair, so I would say that my, our concern was, you know, the, you know, the watershed and the analysis is only as good as the assumptions that go into it, if the lot has substantially changed over time and they're still using assumptions from twenty-twenty-three, when trees have been removed from the property, when neighbors are getting water in their property that they didn't before after these trees are removed, I call into question the accuracy of all this evaluation. We've seen the house change, we've seen the, the changing of where these locations are over the past year, they got something under the variance, they're doing something different now, so I'm calling into question the, the analysis here.
But our, right, so I understand your point, our peer review is based on this proposal, not the ZBA proposal, correct?
Right.
Right, so one of the things we really heavily rely on, so Mr. Sullivan's done a lot of work in here, I, I, this gentleman here, I don't know, I don't know one way or the other anything about him, I do know that I've had Mr. Sullivan on many projects over the last eight years that I've been on the board and I find that he does good work, that doesn't mean that everything is right and accurate and we just say, okay, Jack did it, this, that's perfect, but there, what we really rely on is our peer reviewers, so we send it out to someone who is responsible to the town, not responsible to the other person and their evaluation is based on the plans as presented, not the ZBA plans.
Yeah, right.
Now, to the, to the, to the extent that the plans don't match reality, I can, we can at least take that as, as a consideration.
Yeah, and I would ask that, that there be another analysis done, right, because they're given the plans, the information, they're not there on the site looking at that's correct, right? And the same group, the same peer review was used for Forty Flagship Drive, just FYI.
Right.
After nine enforcement orders, right, we're in the same place, right? That's gonna be us in four years, if this is not the right decision.
So I, I, I understand that comment, but what the, it doesn't take into consideration the other fifteen, twenty, thirty permits that we issued that didn't have problems, so it's like, we have to look at everything kind of globally, so that's a good example of where something went wrong, but I'm just not sure that it went wrong in the permitting.
Okay, so-
Went wrong in the execution, that doesn't give you any comfort, I get it.
No.
I get, I, I get that, but also, we also had thirty other ones where we went through the same process and everything's gone well, so we have to consider that as well.
So, so what, how are we protected by this?
Well, if, well, first, we're, we're not voting on it today, but if we do vote on it and if it is approved, there will be conditions that have to be followed, um, that's the same process that we go with anybody, so any watershed special permit will have conditions baked in that need to be followed, including erosion control guidelines, including it has to meet, actually meet the plans that they submit, including meetings with engineers, meeting with our town, uh, someone on site checking things, things like that, so there's a whole bunch of stuff that's baked in, um, and again, we're not deciding anything today, I'd like to figure out where the variance, uh, issue is going to be and if it needs to go back to the ZBA, there'll be another opportunity to, to speak there, but I think we've definitely heard your concerns and I think I've relayed that if there are other things that we can think of that could be added in, and if you can think of anything that you think that, I think the best thing would be is if we can find things that will make you at ease, if the answer is just like, we can't live with a house there, then I, I'm not sure where it's gonna go.
Well, I, just to, you know, reiterate, the town attorney was not in agreement of issuing the variance?
Yep, so we're, so we're, we're, unless someone changes their mind and tells us otherwise, that's the current lay of the land.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Let me just ask a question.
Yep.
In terms of conditions that may or may not be put on.
Yep.
And this is just a question, um, in some of our, um, decisions here, we have sort of a look back condition.
Yeah.
And do you think that's possible in any manner here, um, with respect to following up, um, to ensure that it's not worse afterwards?
I'm not sure, uh, we haven't done it on any of our watershed special permits that I can remember, not that we can't.
I mostly raised this just so we could think about it.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not looking for-
Well, let me ask, let me ask Jack a question, how would you measure the success of a particular drainage system? Is it just as obvious as it's not, there's no more water coming up, like are you able to take measurements now, what's going off the land, what happened to, and what, versus what happens after you put the drainage system in?
Right, so I model in existing conditions, so what's there, what, how the ground looks now, nothing's changed, we, that, that, nothing's been altered as far as the ground out there. Um, and then I have a proposed design, I say, okay, I have, uh, a house footprint, I have impervious areas, I need to capture that, put it in the ground, then it gets installed and then, as, as you said, Mr. Chairman, there's weekly inspections that occur during the entire time this house is built and those reports are given to the planning board, so-
But is there a way to actually, I, I, modeling is great, but is there a way to actually measure if a system is working?
Yes, so in the infiltration system is part of what I do in my weekly inspections. If we have a big rain event, there's inspection ports that I can open, I can take a measurement in the system and if I say, oh, that was a three-inch storm, I know what my model shows how high that water should be in the chambers and I can say, oh, that was accurate, I'm, I was close or, um-
So is that-
If all of a sudden the chambers were overflowing and there was, they were supposed to be half-empty, we got a problem. I'd go to Jim and say, there could be a crushed pipe with someone going over the system and collapsed one of the chambers, so it is part of this, it is ongoing with the property, there's an operation and maintenance to this drainage system, just like you have, think, things break in your house, you have to have it replaced.
No, I get that.
Drainage needs it, so that's an ongoing thing, even when he sells the house, that operation and maintenance plan goes with this project.
I get that, but I'm wondering if we could put in a condition that, I just, I don't wanna make, I don't wanna also make it too onerous, but I wanna think about a condition that upon a rain event of X, measurements taken and supplied, you know, and if it, the first two or three times, you measure it and it's working, then you, then we measure it, it's working, but if it's not working, then I wanna know that before a problem happens, so let's think about that.
And for your, and for your protection, measure it and that is then documented, that, you know, there was a condition afterwards to measure it.
Yep.
We measured it, we gave you the measurements, it's now documented, it worked.
Yeah.
Okay, let's think about that, so-
Can I, can I just bring something up? So one of the things that we had assigned and it will be, like Jack said, will get passed on to the next owner, is that there's, there's two annual reports, the viewings of this, so that, that's basically a condition, but it's a lifelong condition for this house.
It is, but-
And why do we need to add more conditions to?
Because we have found, it's been at least my experience, that when things go from one owner to a next, there is often a drop in, not necessarily accountability, but knowledge, you've lived with this, right, for the last year, someone else is walking in and buying it, you give them an O and M manual and it goes in the drawer with the manual to the fridge and everything else that they just bought, and I think there's a lot less likelihood of guarantee that, that some, that someone actually goes forward with the testing. That's nothing to do with you, that's just what I've experienced, is that, you know, we put in these conditions in the watershed about fertilizers and telling your landscapers that you can only use certain fertilizers and then we drive around and everyone's doing the wrong thing because someone who bought the property didn't know to tell their landscaper that they can't do that. Further you go down the line, the harder is to make sure that people have actual knowledge, so, and again, I, this is just something that we're thinking about.
I think, I think what would be hard, Mr. Chairman, is typically you guys ask for a bond.
Yep.
At the end of the project, people come in for their bond release, if there's problems, you wouldn't release the bond, but once you release the bond, like you said, the conditions go on, but five years from now, could this house have changed hands twice?
We're not talking about five years.
Okay.
No, 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 I'm talking about like first three rain events or something.
Oh, three rain, okay, that, that's more manageable.
Talking a short period of, not every time it rains, I'm talking a short period of time to make sure that it's, that it's working.
And this is really that you've, you've done your plans, we've had the peer review, you're experienced, so you're proceeding with, uh, good due diligence. What we're saying is that in some instances, we see that it could be very helpful that once it's done, we have a condition that asks, did it work?
Yep.
And that's what this is.
We're not saying indefinitely.
Not five years, it's the first three rain events, or what, however we might craft it.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's something to make sure that it's working.
Got it.
Um, okay.
And, you know, you can argue, you may not, but it could be argued that once it's done, it may also help you to then have documentation that, hey, we did it, it worked.
Yeah.
And someone buying the property may feel more comfortable knowing that they bought something that works.
Right.
Um, question of procedure, so we're not gonna vote unless anybody wants to vote. Nope, okay, nobody wants to vote on this until we have assurances one way or the other about ZBA. You're gonna try to talk to the building inspector when he comes back from vacation.
Yeah.
We can continue this until our next meeting, which is-
August twenty-seventh.
August twenty-seventh, that doesn't give us a lot of time, but we can, or the next meeting, so what I want you to have is the opportunity to talk with him. If the, if it stays the way it is, you're gonna have to go to ZBA, or, or you can challenge his decision and with whatever legal means you wanna do. If he changes his mind, then it comes back, but I think I'd rather know kind of all of that beforehand, not make people come if we don't have any information, that's just my thought. What is your, what's your kind of timetable in terms of where things are, I mean, I know you wanna go as soon as possible, right?
Yeah.
What's, what do you think is the likelihood of talking with the building inspector next week and having something meaningful to report back in two weeks?
I'm hopeful, I mean, I think we have a great argument for, that we've more than exercised our, our due diligence moving forward.
Jean, what do you think about the likelihood of them meeting with Paul and then getting something to us that we can hang our hat on, is two weeks enough time?
Yeah, as long as he responds.
Okay, so, let's then continue it until August twenty-seventh and we'll wait to hear, um, if for some reason you talk with him and you agree that we're not gonna decide, that you're gonna go back to the ZBA, please let us know so that we can continue it and not have everyone come in, we're not actually gonna do anything.
We'll go ahead.
Yep, alright. Okay, so please, anyone who's interested, the week before, towards the end of the week, either check with Jean or check the agenda, just to see if we're actually gonna have it on the twenty-seventh, and if we get more information, we'll try to post it as soon as possible, okay? Okay, continued until August twenty-seventh, thank you, to you guys for your per, presentation and thank you to everyone who came in and provided any-
Great.
Okay.
Thanks. Thanks, Jean.
Okay, fourteen fifty, one eighty-nine, three thirty-five, fifty-six. Um, one one oh one Turnpike Street, Metro West Realty LLC, application for land disturbance permit in connection with proposed construction of parking lot extension, AmeriMac Valley operation and maintenance facility, National Gerais.
So the applicant's proposing to construct a seventy-two space parking lot extension, expansion and repave, re-streight the six thousand square foot existing lot, proposed parking lot expansion includes landscaping, utility and stormwater improvements, it will disturb approximately fifty-six thousand square feet and increase impervious surface by more than twenty-two thousand square feet. A portion of the proposed work is within a hundred-foot buffer to an onsite resource area as well as the two hundred riverfront area of an onsite perennial stream. The proposed stormwater management system includes catch basins that discharge into a gravel wetland with a sediment for bay. As a reminder, the applications before you under provisions of chapter one sixty Stormwater Management and Erosion Control Bylaw and chapter two fifty Stormwater Management and Erosion Control Regulations.
So I had a, I, I'm just trying to look up the bylaws, I did have a question about that, cause I heard the, the conversation was first about that and then it kind of dovetailed into different questions of use and stuff like that. How, if it's a land disturbance permit and, and a permit for, for stormwater, how much of what it's going to be used for, are we actually able to get in, or is the question more if it, is it, is, are they actually asking for something more than a land dis- should there be a different permit that they're applying for? I guess that, that was just one of the things I thought about when I heard that.
Well, I, I mean, a little bit, we were trying to understand logic and rationale for what they proposed by putting what they did where they did and not putting it someplace else, because one of our immediate observations is, this is right in the middle of the open field, it's probably the most attractive piece of the property and why would you wanna put it there, where it's tight, where it impacts potentially, uh, wetland resources and streams, and so we asked those sort of questions, cause we wanted to have context, I mean, it's, it's not like we were insisting on something, we just wanted to understand it.
No, no, I'm just-
And also, it's a slope, this is a principal thoroughfare, you know, obviously the engineering has to be right so that in the event of some type of big weather event, it doesn't impact the roadway and I'm sure that'll all be engineered, but it also was part of the question, with all that in mind, what, why in this spot? What, what is it you're doing at the facility that drives this decision?
I just wanna make sure we're on solid ground and we don't go too far afield because, I mean, I guess we need, I guess we can find out what the answer is, but I'm not sure, I'm not necessarily sure what we can do with the answer when we get it, that was-
Sure.
The only point I'm raising, cause as I say-
I think it was really context.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Help us have what we need to make a decision, this was context.
Okay, alright, hi Jeff.
Alright, good evening. Uh, Jeff Ketterts with VHB, I have Jeremy Stevenson from JLO with me, uh, as well, and- And maybe just to hop in, and Jeremy can chime in more on the, on the operations side of the parking, but, you know, certainly from our site plan standpoint, the location up front, really from an accessibility standpoint, you know, being proximate to the, to the entry of the building and where majority of the staff is going, and, and really balancing around where the riverfront area and the 100-foot buffer zone are on the southern portion of that site. So, that was primarily the reason for it. Jeremy, I'm not sure if there's any other... There we go.
So, that was a good overview. Hi, everyone. Jeremy Stevenson, I'm one of the project managers for this project, working with National Grid. Gene, could you go a little bit, could you scroll down and maybe you could show the, should be a satellite image, that might be helpful. That one, that one's okay right there. So, so the reason why we are choosing this front, this front parking area and we're expanding it is, you can see right there, we have about four or five ADA spots right there. There's a small parking lot right there. So, we'd like to expand it into that front area because there's two large auditoriums in that area. So, we do have a fair amount of employees from National Grid coming to the site fairly often to do trainings of that sorts. From what I've been told from National Grid as well is, this is a very active storm site, so we do have a fair amount of people that are remotely located around the North Andover facility that get called in and then need to be there for, sometimes it can be 12, 24 hours, however long it may be. So, they would like to have, you know, that front parking area for those people. In addition, they would also like it for, just to be a little bit more centrally located to the facility. There's not a lot of parking outside of the area. There's kind of a, if there's a larger view of the site, Gene, maybe that would be helpful. There's kind of a lay-down storage area that's south of where the plan is showing, and then there's a fairly steep slope that goes from the main parking area down to that area that I'm mentioning, and it does get fairly icy during the winter months, so they would like to have parking as close as possible in the area that we're proposing. So, right in that, yeah, if you scroll down, or sorry, zoom in. Yeah, so right there is the, the lay-down area, there's a garage bay, a garage area right there, and then, so this is a lay-down area and has been, is not advisable really from, from a safety standpoint to be parking there because of the slope of that driveway right there and the icing that occurs in the winter months. Any questions?
Yeah, a little bit, I mean, I'm going to a little bit, sort of, eat in to your comments, I get them, but to some degree, understanding this, you need to understand the use of the facility and whether it's changed, and potentially even whether it triggers another permit, if that's possible. And I think also, part of the discussion here is just a, you know, National Grid's a long-time neighbor, it's fair to ask some generic questions of, you know, the look and feel of the property is reasonably attractive today, it's got a nice sitting on the property, build-up parking lot in front that's gone, okay? Fair enough, and it's their property, and, you know, they can do what they want with it pretty much, but if indeed it has some externalities in the town, it'd be nice to know. I mean, because I'm still struggling with, like, when the smoke clears of this, are there going to be more people working here than there are now, or are the hours of operation going to be any different, or?
No, I, I've been, no, nothing that I've been letting...
How come nobody from National Grid came? We asked to have somebody come, did they just like, is that...
They sent me, I don't know why.
They sent you?
I think some of it was vacation, something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's not a good, in my mind, that's bad faith. And not any insult to you at all, because I think you're doing a good job explaining it, but not to have somebody come for something that big is, you know, not particularly neighborly. But my more significant question is, how many parking spaces are on this property today?
It's about 300...
I don't have that number in front of me exactly.
336.
Say that again?
336 currently, and the proposed improvements would add about 66 to that.
And what, like, percentage full of the parking today, like, on average?
It's tough to say, it's not, so they have different shifts, and so vehicles come in and out. You know, I would say that it is almost entirely fully used in that, in that area that we can see right there. There are spots in the back, but there's an upper area right there that there are a fair amount of spots, but like I mentioned, it's, it's really for, you know, relocating just regular employees that are just driving a regular car, just commuting to their jobs, and then also housing those people in the storm, storm scenarios.
So, can we see the proposed parking lot on an image like this?
Sure, I think if Gene goes back, there's a nice overlay. It might be in a different PDF. If, um... Four images via email.
Okay, Gene.
So, this is just not a satellite image, the one that was shown previously was a satellite image with the parking lot overlaid onto it. So, you can still go off of that one right there. And then I'd just like to add to one point. So, we are, we are increasing the amount of trees that were bordering the parking lot. I think that was one of your points beforehand, and I think that's, that's going to be incorporated to the plan as well.
Gene, is this, is there a site plan special permit or anything for the property currently?
Because they've attested that the use is not changing, then it didn't seem to trigger site plan review to me.
No, 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 but is there one currently? Like, is there, like, is there in the past, has there been a...
It probably came before site plan review, because it was, was built probably 10 years before.
Right, so when it, so that's...
But the question, I guess, is that what would be the parking requirements of the site based on the size and the use?
I can find out.
And there's no, I assume there's no MEPA thresholds triggered by an increase of 66 parking spaces on a state highway? I would assume so, but why don't you double-check that and make sure?
We'll make sure we, we check everything.
John's like, no.
So, did I understand?
I just want to make sure.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Did I understand from your earlier comments, when you were first showing us the parking in the rear, I think you were pointing out that there were limited handicap spaces? If I heard you correctly?
No, I did not, no, I didn't say it was limited.
Well, there was a certain number.
Look at the, you can, I was just using it as a reference point, because the...
But, so my question is, is this the new parking lot?
Yes.
Yes.
So, that doesn't do anything for you with proximity of handicap parking lots? A lot of these spaces are quite some distance from the building. So, I don't understand what you were telling us before. Is this just to increase the number of parking spaces at the facility?
In, in proximity to the, to the building, yes.
But it extends, the new parking lot extends so far out that it's no more proximate than the rear one?
Not the one to the left, but, but it's the one to the south, and that's, it's really tried to improve on that, you know, that path of travel.
So, this part, so, so these people don't have to park so far away?
That's a lay-down area, that's not a parking area for daily workers. You told us that was a lay-down area.
I believe they're being utilized for, for both, off, lay down off to the left there where it's...
Striped.
Where it's disturbed, but, but there is parking spread out throughout that.
I see. I'm just having a hard time following what, what we're doing.
Well, let's assume, so we, we know it's just a parking lot, right? There's nothing, it's, there's no buildings being added, right? So, we got parking lot and trees. So, let's assume there's no real good reason, let's assume there's no real good reason to, to build this, and it's unattractive, and it's allowing them to have more people park there, or even more people come and work there.
Well, we also asked for a view from 114, were you able to do that?
Those are still in progress, renderings, showing those views, as well as photometric plan.
Great. But you were able to work on that?
Yes, yes, those, those will be, those will be forthcoming.
Okay. I mean, I want to see all those, I'm just not, unless it actually triggers something under a site plan review, I'm not sure there's much we can do other than the storm. Well, I want to reread the regulations as to land disturbance, but I didn't really see anything, if there's no use change. I mean, I don't like the cage-ness of, I mean, if you're just building a big ugly parking lot, just tell us you're building a big ugly parking lot.
To that end, we had asked for someone from National Grid, and thank you for being here, but since we're going to have another meeting, could we ask again?
We can ask them, they can, just, please relay the message.
I will.
Great, maybe they're no longer on vacation?
Yeah, that'd be nice. Uh, well, so, what do we have?
So, the other question that was asked last week was to provide an earthwork estimate in terms of the cut and fills, and I think this is the area you were asking for, that was in last week's, that was a presentation at the last meeting.
Yep. Yes, and, and, Gene, some of them are wrong, but the, the net cut fill is about 1,300 cubic yards of, of export as part of this project, just to balance the grading, as well as based on the design of the gravel wetland system to, to the southeast there. And we can follow up with a documented figure in those numbers as well, but we were showing a, a net export.
Okay. So, things we're following up on, Gene, you're going to check on what the parking requirements would be for this type of facility. You guys are going to make sure that this doesn't trip any MEPA thresholds and let us know, and then you're going to still follow up on the items that were requested at the last meeting that you're working on, and again, relay to National Grid that it would really be a nice thing for someone to come and at least tell us what they're doing.
And we appreciate the tree trimming to avoid unnecessary power outages in town. Thank you.
I will say that. I haven't lost power in like, four years.
Oh, we have.
It's been good, so, keep it up.
I think a little less.
More for us.
Okay.
But that's where they're trimming the trees, so...
There you go.
We're going to fix it.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, I know other people down, go out all the time, so, keep working on it, keep getting it better, keep putting things underground.
All except for one tree, which we're going to hold off on cutting.
Right, that one needs to stay. Okay, continued, is August 27 enough time, or do you want September 10?
I believe, so, a couple of the, we are, we are still open with conservation, that means tomorrow, I believe that we're going to continue that as well. There is, as part of the stormwater peer review, the last thing we need to do to close out is some additional test pits, just to verify the location, so there are a couple items if time was...
So, why don't, why don't, Jeff, why don't we do this, I'll give you August 27?
Yeah, that'd be great.
If, for some reason, you don't have the stuff ready, or aren't ready, as one of the National Grid can't be here, but they can be on the 10th, just let Gene know, we can continue, I don't think we're going to have too much public input, so.
Just a reminder, they filed an extension for the time to render decision to September 12th, so two days after the 10th meeting.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
1250 Oz Good Street, 1250 Oz Good Street, LLC application for limited site plan review, special permit, site plan review, and parking special permit under Article 8 supplemental regulations, Part 3, site plan review. Article 8, 195, 8.17.1, Article 8, Part 1, 195, 8.8, Article 10, Administration, 195, 10.7. The applicant proposes raising of existing building and related improvement and redevelopment of the property into a two slash three-story building of approximately 21,145 square feet in size. New building to be used for childcare facility and associated play areas, along with medical office uses and other uses as may be allowed under zoning by law. Property is located in the I-2 zoning district. Gene?
Steve, how are you? Good, John, how are you? Good, very good.
So, the site is the former Hokkaido restaurant. The redevelopment project proposes to remove the existing one-story restaurant and construct a three-story daycare facility with medical office building uses as well on a 2.34 acre parcel. The existing site includes 58,000 square feet of impervious area. There does not appear to be any existing stormwater practices currently on site. However, there's a bordering vegetated wetland associated with a stream, and it's shown in the north corner of the parcel. The proposed redevelopment includes reducing the total impervious area to 56,454. The proposed stormwater management system includes one double catch basin that directs runoff to a storm scepter water quality unit and a subsurface chamber system that outlets via twin 18-inch HDPE pipes. Peer review services have begun for stormwater, civil, and traffic. The first stormwater peer review letter has been received, and there are a number of comments that need to be addressed. The application has been submitted for a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. Department review comments have been received from NAPD, NAFD, Conservation and DPW Operations. No concerns were expressed from those departments. The Health Department cautioned that any, that the applicant may want to reach out to discuss a potential food permit. Currently, there is no food storage or prep area proposed, no other concerns were expressed. The applicant was granted a ZBA variance for front setback and visual buffer requirements and rear setback requirements in April of '24. A copy of the variance decision is included in your packet. And waivers were requested for fiscal impact, community impact, and commonwealth review. Although mass DOT access permit will be required, the application cannot be filed until the town's approval is secured.
Gene, I have a question. So, this, the childcare facility is filed under our Dover by law.
Yeah.
Fine, makes sense. But the medical wouldn't fall under.
Right, they filed for a special permit.
So, that's a special, a separate filing with a different special permit?
Yeah. And they're also asking for parking relief as well.
And Gene, did you say three-story building?
Three stories, so two-facing, 125, but because of the topography, the rear side would, would look like three.
Thank you.
Okay. That answers...
It scales down.
Yeah. Okay. Let's hear what you got.
Please, Mr. Chairman, other members of the board, John Smolak, attorney for the applicant. With me is Steve Sapinski, AmeriMac Engineering. Also participating remotely is Cheryl Swaker of Jamal Kiesel Architects and Engineers, who will be presenting a bit on the architectural design. Also remote is Manoj Gandhi and Queen Al Rao, who are principals of the applicant, and Ben Stone, who's with Stucl, Stucl Group, who is the project manager, sort of, construction manager for the, for the project, who are here and available to answer any questions that you may have. Also on the team, but aren't participating tonight, are Chris Hunter, of Hunterson Associates, as well as Scott Thornton of NASA Associates on traffic. So, who will be here to make a presentation, I would assume, at the next meeting, which might be September 10 or so, hopefully.
August 27.
August 27, all if peer review comes in and someone, sure. So, as...
But, John, man, I know you, you, who said Manoj and Ben, they're trying to get let into the virtual meeting. If someone can let them in virtually, they're in the waiting room.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Cheryl. Thank you. So, so as, as Gene indicated, the, the site is the former Hokkaido restaurant, former Beijing, and before that, the former Butcher Boy Steakhouse, way back when. And, and so, the applicant had initially attempted to try to salvage this building and decided later on that it was probably more effective or efficient to, to really do a raise and rebuild, and that's, that's what they're proposing here. And as, as Gene indicated, the, the building includes approximately 21,000 square feet of gross floor area, three-quarters of which will be dedicated to a childcare facility, and the balance would be medical office or other use that's allowed in the I-2 zoning district. So, and as, as had been indicated by Gene, the, it's a combination of Dover Amendment, limited site plan review process... limited site plan review process combined with customary site plan review for the medical office use. And we added a parking special permit as a placeholder in the event as we get through peer review, we might have to make adjustments. We've incorporated that in the event that we need to either make design adjustments or lay out adjustments based on peer review that comes through. And so and as Gina indicated, we had been before the zoning board appeals and obtained variances to basically allow the building to be located in generally the same location as the existing building today. And so we've requested a front yard setback to approximately 31 feet where 100 feet is required. We've also included a variance to allow for the first 50 feet to include parking and other improvements along Osgood Street as well. And a rear yard setback, as you'll see in the site plan later, there's a setback. The lot sort of curves in towards the back of the building, and so we've requested and were granted relief in that regard as well. Since the project is... portion of the project is located within the wetlands buffer, where we filed a notice of intent, and that first hearing before the commission is tomorrow night. In addition, as Gina indicated, we'll need a mass DOT access permit to slightly adjust some of the curb cuts, which Steve will mention. And lastly, because of the proximity to the airport, we'll file a customary FAA hazardous navigation and airspace review with the DOT, mass DOT as well. And don't expect to see any changes with respect to that as a result of that review. Also, we wanted to note, although you don't see it on this elevation, that at the time that we went before the zoning board of appeals, it wasn't clear as to whether we'd be able to salvage the existing standing sign that's there today. And I'm sorry, the existing freestanding sign that's there today. And so just this past week, the building commissioner made a determination we'll need a setback variance for that sign, which would be located, as you'll see shortly, in generally the same location as the existing foundation for that sign. But it'll be far enough away, so it'll be adequate site distances. In terms of... Gina, if you could just move through a couple of slides ahead. So in terms of the site, the aerial, if we could...
Gina, can you go back to the airport one showing the runway? No, no, the one you were just on. Yeah, that... John, the reason I'm looking at this, I know you said you're doing the standard aviation airport restrictions, but we just had the manager of the airport here, and he said that they are pursuing regionally, including here, an additional review of... I don't know if I have the term correct. Restricted landing zone, which if I understood it correctly, is the areas off the ends of the runway, and this is not.
Right.
Are you familiar with that term?
Yes, and you know, we haven't spoken with the airport manager, but we will consult with him when we make our filings.
Super, thank you.
Yeah, sure. That's a good point.
And I don't recall this being one of the ones that they were thinking about purchasing.
In between the runways, not near the end.
Yeah.
So I think it's not an issue.
I'm glad we're all cognizant of that now.
So I know that all of you have been by the site a thousand times, and so I'll keep this brief. I mean, to the bottom of the screen is EJ Armitas. The red dot in the middle is the site. You have EJ Armitas, then Loft and Joe Fish beyond that. And to the north, you have the Starbucks and Princeton Properties project. Above that, across the street, you have French Farm Road, Old Farm Road, and a lot of screening in front of that as well. And behind that is the old Borden facility, which is the new 6K, and other facilities that are located in that complex at this point. And so just again, just to get your bearings, it's primarily a commercial area. Existing conditions plan, as we've indicated, as Gina's indicated, we're again raising the existing building, rebuilding, installing stormwater improvements where none currently exist. And also, you know, new parking as well. We're proposing 90 parking spaces where 78 are required. But beyond that, I'd like to, again, this is the sign... if you look at that slide, you'll see the existing sign that's there today. We're going to try to salvage that foundation and put in a new ground sign. And the new ground sign is in the plan set that you've received. Beyond that, I'd like to just turn the discussion over to Steve Stupinski, who will just walk you through the site.
Thank you, John. Steve Stupinski, Meramec Engineering. Currently, there are two large curb cuts that mass DOT provided. I think at one time, when this was Butcher Boy, it was all open. Not a constrained curb entrance anywhere, but over the years, the curb cuts got reduced. We're going to make both of those smaller. They're going to be about 24 to 28 feet in size. What you see on my plan is going to change a foot or two because of the swept analysis for the fire truck, which just got done this past week. So we'll be making one or two revisions to the entryways. The circulation on the site is generally going to be one-way in and across the front for parents to drop off the children. One-way circulation on the eastern side of the building, where again, parents would park to drop off children with a walkway leading from that parking lot into the daycare in the front. It's one-way circulation around the back, then transitioning into a two-way driveway on the left. Those spaces and those immediately to the left of the building, or the west side of the building, are primarily there for medical office. You'll see that the handicap parking has required a significant change in the grade. Clearly, the spaces that are there today don't meet the town standard for size. They don't meet them for grade. They don't meet the handicap requirements. There's really not much on that site that complies with your site plan and zoning requirements. So literally, we're reconstructing the grades, making everything comply with ADA requirements and with town zoning. That's why I think we're really channelizing the traffic in a much better method than what's there right now. It's kind of a free-for-all, but that won't be the case once the site is developed. Generally speaking, we're keeping the edge of pavement in about the same location on the easterly side of the site that is currently there. On the armitas side, which is the west side, we're expanding the pavement slightly because the spaces just don't comply with zoning. They're, you know, 12 feet deep, and they need to be another six foot deeper, seven foot deeper. And the aisle width is relatively undefined there as well. So we're regrading the site, but wherever we have the opportunity to remove pavement, we're doing that. In the northeast corner of the parking lot, we're taking out a corner of pavement. We'll be replanting that. The centroid of the site is directly behind the northerly side of the building. There'll be a playground, and there'll be a landscaped area, which doesn't exist today. Playground on the easterly side of the building as well. And then pockets of landscaping that will go into the islands that segregate the two westerly parking lots. Chris Hunter's prepared the plan. I think he has... he wasn't available for this evening, but I think he's done a good job. We went through the bylaw, looking at what the bylaw requires in terms of percentage of landscaping in the parking lots, the number of trees, et cetera, per the square footage of the spaces. And he's done a good job, I think, laying out the planting plan and defining the edge of the site along 125, which is all open right now with a fence that would, I think, provide a sense of place and amenity to the site.
Are the playgrounds within the building or outside?
The playground's on the exterior of the site. On the right-hand side, the playground would actually be elevated. If you could envision the topography, the building's two stories in the front. It's three stories in the back. So where the site currently makes a transition from the 125 elevation down eight feet below grade, it does it right up against the building. What we're doing is we're lengthening the length of travel, so we're able to reduce the intensity of the slope that is there right now by making it a longer run. And in that space, we're putting a playground. Playground is elevated so that you would come out of what you see as the first floor on 125. That's the elevation of the playground on the right. The playground on the back comes out at what would be the current, I guess, the basement floor grade, I guess, out the back. So the playgrounds are on two levels. One are raised and one lower.
And what do you have for... there's fencing or walls? And what do you have?
The playgrounds are fenced. Where there's not a retaining wall, because there's a retaining wall with a fence above it, where there's no retaining wall, and where within any proximity at all to automobile traffic, there are bollards. And we show them on the plan. The bollards are spaced six foot on center so that a car can't go through them. It's a requirement of something that we suggested, the architects suggested, but it's also a requirement of the daycare provider as well.
That was what I wanted to hear.
You said there was a fence out front?
Yeah, if you look at the front elevation, I think if you went back to the original elevation view, you'll see the fence that's proposed. I don't know if you can take a look at it. It's a post-rail fence that would be along the state layout line, the property line, to provide a sense of identity, I think, to the site. That was the goal.
I had a question. You said that the daycare encompasses roughly one-third of the property. Is that going to be the most of the first floor in the existing lower grade in the back? Or where does that play out in the layout, I guess?
I have on the drawing sort of a breakdown of basement. Daycare area is 1,665 square feet. The first floor is 3925. And the second floor is 9740. So...
So it'll be on...
So majority would be on the second floor, I guess, is what I would say of the daycare.
And the other kind of bays to the left of that will be for the medical office?
Right. And I think Cheryl can take you through there as well. As far as the utilities go...
Before you jump off, can you talk a little bit about the sidewalk construction? Because obviously, that's a newly constructed sidewalk.
Outside the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Yeah, the... there's a sidewalk which follows the front of the building that goes all around the building. So on the left side, where the ADA parking is, and from that parking lot, there's a sidewalk that runs along the west side of the building, along the south side, which is the 125 face, and then runs along the easterly side of the building of the playground. So right out to the back.
So I mean the Route 125 sidewalk that was recently installed through mass DOT permitting. Is that going to have to come up at all?
What we're going to do is when we're closing the... how to say "closing"? When we're modifying the curb cuts, making them smaller, we'll have to extend that sidewalk towards the driveways because the curb cuts are like this. We're going to make them like this, and we'll have to...
But you don't have to take the back of curbing up and reconstruct any of the sidewalk?
We'll be... we call for putting the curbing in to close the curb cut. Right. So we'll be... the work we're doing within the right-of-way would be removing and resetting some curb curbs, moving them closer together. We'll be adding vertical VA4 credit curbing, and we'll be extending the sidewalk to the new curb cuts.
It's under mass DOT's access permit, but ADA compliance and all that?
Right, yes. And right now, they're ADA compliant at the curb cuts. When we close the curb cuts, we'll have to do the same thing. As far as utilities, currently, the building is serviced with sewer. For, I guess, for a long, long time, it was septic. But there's a sewer that runs from the back of the building up on the easterly side, across Route 125. And I guess it goes into what would be, I guess, was the French Farm Sewer from years ago. That's how the sewer got extended up there, French Farm Village. But anyway, the sewer lines that are on the site, we're proposing those remain. We're going to be using the main that's there. It's, I say relatively new, less than 20 years. The water service, both the sprinkler and domestic, we'll be using those taps. Those are, again, relatively new, extending them to the new building. Gas will have to be excavated and removed, but there'll be gas service to the building as well available. Drainage, I think, as Gina indicated, we have an infiltration system in the back. Double catch basin to collect the drainage now that'll runoff from the newly graded area. There's no drainage on the site whatsoever right now. The only stormwater mitigation that exists on the site is that the water backs up behind some of the curbing that's there in a pond, and then sort of spills over it into the wetlands. So that's the treatment is spilling over the curb and through some scrub brush to get to the wetland. We're going to be treating it. The idea is to comply with the redevelopment stormwater regulations. We're treating this as a redevelopment site and doing the phosphorus removal, et cetera. That is not being done right now. We may be making some modifications to this based on the stormwater, the peer review comments. So we're evaluating a different system rather than what we've proposed originally. So that's in flux. Again, hopefully resolved in the next couple of weeks. I think as far as lighting goes, just to bring you back towards the amenities, I think if you look at the landscaping plan, there are poles with site lighting that have been sprinkled around the site. So rather than just having wall packs around the building and having telephone poles with mass electric standard lights on them, which exist right now, I think the idea is to treat it a little bit more aesthetically pleasing with cutoff fixtures to control the light and sprinkle it throughout the site. And I think, and that's the lighting plan. So that... the photometric plan complies with zoning in terms of the amount of spillover, et cetera. So that, the photometric plan complies with zoning in terms of the amount of spillover, et cetera. I'm a surrogate traffic engineer tonight. I'm not going to say a lot about it, except that Vanessa did a very extensive report. I showed my wife, I gotta read this and present it tonight. She's, look at all these pages. There's a lot there. But the bottom line is that when, if this was a restaurant at the size of the building that's there right now, the traffic generation would be eight hundred and eighty-five vehicles per day on a weekday. It's nine hundred and eighty-five or something, close to a thousand on a Saturday or Sunday on a weekend. The daycare and medical use combined has about 10% less traffic from the restaurant use, even with the additional square footage.
Not the restaurant that was currently there, though. That's why, that's why they're not in business.
If the restaurant was open, if it was Butcher Boy Restaurant, I remember when it was the steakhouse, I'm old. And I can tell you that there were more than nine hundred cars there on a Saturday.
I mean, I will say that I think what works well is that daycare, you know, drop-offs are usually six, six-thirty to eight-thirty. Medical is usually nine to five, and pickups are usually four-thirty to six-thirty. So those work well together. I'm more interested in the parking and just making sure there are enough spots and that there are places that. Whenever we've done daycare ones, we're overly cautious where parents have to park, where kids are walking across, and that that's not really crossing with the, with where the doctor-patients are going and things like that.
Two comments in that regard. Your zoning requires, I think, seventy-eight spaces. Vanessa did an analysis based on the ITE parking requirements. You'll read in his report, as I did, that there would be seventy, the square footage and the uses that we have. So your zoning is a little bit more than what ITE would require. The owner was concerned about exactly what you've just mentioned. Would rather have more parking at peak periods available so that we don't have cars blocking each other and having issues. And so that's why we have the additional spaces, the ninety spaces. That's the reason for the other fifteen spaces.
And in the past, we've seen, I think, when we did a, maybe a site plan review at, with the daycare at, what's the one where Pointobistro is, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, that like some designated parking spots for like the medical, people coming to the medical, maybe some designated parking spots for people just dropping off.
Right.
Might be, are good ways to keep those.
That's a good point, yeah.
That's just something, we've been through this a couple of times, and when you have mixed-use buildings, mixed-use buildings with different types of uses that complement each other are great. You just have to be careful of the vulnerable people, both, you know, people might have crutches going into the, wheelchairs going to the doctor's office. We'll make sure that they're taken care of. Kids and parents going into the daycare, we'll make sure, and staff going in, we'll make sure they're taken care of. So sometimes having certain designated spots, not all of them, you know, but just, you know, five or 10 spots for the doctors so that people can just, there are a couple of spots for drop-off. Would be something just to take a look at that might be helpful.
We could do that with paper markings and signage, both.
Yep, yep.
The only other thing I would add to the traffic is I know when you look at Scott's analysis, there's no changes in the level of service as a result of the development that's proposed from what's there right now. Now, when, when there's currently a B, it'll still be a B. When it's currently a D, it'll still be a D. The only changes that might occur is when 133 and 125 get reconstructed by the state. They're going to be eliminating a slip lane, and that's going to change the traffic flow on 125, I think.
Remind me of left-hand turns in, are you going to have both of the entryways entrance? Or is one going to be exit only in? What about the left-hand turns? I mean, that's always a little bit challenging.
Right. On the curb cut, I don't know if you want to go back to the site plan. Landscape plan would work. We have two-way traffic only on, yeah, so if you kind of look at the arrows, it's a one-way traffic going in on the right-hand side and counter-clockwise circulation. The curb cut on the west would be the two-way.
Okay.
So we have a one, we have two ins and only one out. And on the out, you can actually take a left. And when I spoke to Scott about that, there's enough of a gap. The traffic signals down at Butcher Boy at 133, and then you've got the signals that are over at Princeton. So you have gaps that are adequate to allow the turning movements.
And just make sure with the sign, the sign's not in the way of that, seeing for that left-hand turn?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Just make sure that the sign is not in the way, that the person doesn't have to pull out too far to make that left-hand turn? Yeah, standing sign.
Yeah, we actually, John brought that up today.
Mediocre minds.
Or yesterday, and Scott looked at it, and the site visibility triangles are fine. So the sign doesn't block it. He sent us an email on that today.
Good, okay.
Yeah.
Seems well covered. So I guess next, unless you have anything?
Like, as far as the building goes, I, I'm, I, I don't have to be a surrogate tonight because Cheryl's right here.
What's the total height?
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, everyone. I'm Cheryl Schweiger with Jarmel Kaisel Architects and Engineers. So if you want to start with the floor plan, I can give you a quick run-through on the building on the next slide. Okay, so this is the basement floor plan, which is visible from the rear of the property on the lower level. The basement area will primarily be comprised of utility spaces and then a play area room for the daycare, and they'll also have access to their preschool playground from that lower level, which will be fenced in and have vehicle protection, which Steve mentioned earlier. Moving to the next floor, which is the ground floor plan, as you see, has the main entrances as seen from 125 with the daycare entrance on the right-hand side. So parents will park on those parking spaces there, walk their child in into the secure vestibule, and then bring their child to their classroom, and then exit the building. Everything is done through the main entrance. No other entrances are used for the parents while dropping off. On the ground floor, we have all the younger-aged childrens, infants and toddlers. So children under the age of two and a half are located at this ground level, and they also have direct access to their specific playground, which also has an emergency exit gate at that level. And then you have the other two medical suites on the other side. On the second floor are all classrooms for the older children, preschool, children over the age of two and a half, and their accessory spaces, teacher bathrooms, teacher lounge, laundry room. And then we have our egress exit stairs and the elevator that also services all three floors of the daycare. So the elevations of the building, as you saw in the 3D rendering, the view of the building from 125 will have the entrances to the medical suites on the left side. There are associated parking on that side with the daycare entrance on the right-hand side, clearly marked with their specific branding for the franchise that will be operating the daycare. And then in the rear elevation, you can see where that grade changes. You have the walkout basement, as we call it, with access to that playground on the lower level. The architecture of the building is comprised of some masonry materials, some brick on the ground floor, and a cementitious product for the rest of the building materials. We have a mancered roof with asphalt shingles. There will be a flat section behind that manceral that will house all the mechanical equipment. So it will be screened from view. And then just the associated signage and entrance protection canopies over those entryways compromises the, composes the materials for the building.
Gene, is there a view from the rear as well?
A rendering view?
Yeah, if you go back one slide, there's a 2D, yeah, we did not do a 3D rendering from the rear of the building. I just have the 2D elevations from the back.
So what does the composition of the siding look like in the rear compared to what we see on the front in the rendering?
It's hardy plank, I think.
A hardy, yeah, if you go to the 2D color elevations, you can see them, that siding continues to the rear. So we have the brick that wraps around the sides and then ends where, on the first floor, and then the rest of this is siding.
Just a general question about windows, and I don't, I don't hold myself up to be an expert, but it looks like your windows are kind of symmetric in some places and unsymmetric in other places, and then completely lacking in windows in other places. I'm wondering just, like, how you put that together and why you did it? Is it, is it functionality? Is it aesthetics? Or why did you do it the way you did it?
Sure, that's a great question. So unfortunately, because of the function of the daycare, when we designed the classroom sizes, we sized the classrooms to be efficient in terms of the daycare licensing regulations. So for example, if a classroom can only hold 20 children in it, we sized the classroom for 20 kids. And as you lay it out, you get some unsymmetrical layouts of the windows. And I did try to provide some symmetry at the front elevation where I could. You can see on the daycare side, we have some additional doors and windows on that side because we wanted those emergency egress doors for those infant rooms directly to the outside. So that's why it's a little asymmetrical. Again, less than ideal, but it's one of those that form follows function where we're complying with what we need to do for the daycare use.
And how about, like, on the side, all the way on the left, where there's kind of like a certain sparseness of windows, and then in the back part, there's no windows at all?
Yeah. Those are the stair towers. So the egress stair towers are in those back corners. That's why you don't see any windows, because it's a fire-rated enclosure shaft. We want to, you know, try to avoid having openings in a fire-rated shaft.
Can you comment just briefly on sort of shelter-in-place type precautions that you have for a childcare facility?
Are you referring to an emergency situation for, say, weather or any other type of emergency situation?
I am referring to emergency, and I was really asking about an active shooter.
Active shooter. So that's another great question. While I'm not privy to the specific operations of the franchise on how they conduct those, I'm sure there's some information that they don't want to always make known so people don't know how they function. But from my understanding is that they would shelter in place in a bathroom. So every single classroom has its own bathroom. Again, they're small, but where we have multiple bathrooms in the older classrooms, we can house children there. There's no windows into those. There are some devices that we work with on some emergency responders with to have in the classroom doors in the hallway that does prevent someone from knocking down a door to gain entry.
That's enough. I don't want to lay out all the details. I was just curious to hear that there are provisions.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can someone just quickly tell me what the height of the building is?
It's thirty-eight point five eight, just under thirty-nine feet at its tallest point.
Great.
John, that's measured from where?
I believe that's measured from the rear, I mean, which is the lowest elevation.
Okay.
But I don't have the average elevation.
Right, no, that's all right. I just wanted, I was curious if it was right to back.
Okay, great. Anything else for tonight?
No, I think that's it for us.
Wonderful. Next steps, Gene?
So peer reviews need to advance, and like I said, we did it for traffic, civil, and stormwater. And only stormwater has come through with their first letter yet, so.
Okay, and the waiver request is to fiscal and social make a perfect sign. Okay, I think that's a great presentation. Looks like a really good project. I did wonder that karaoke is grandfathered in, so I didn't see that in the plans. It's been there for years and years, so make sure you find somewhere.
A man with experience.
Yeah. No one wants that. Ah, Smithia said it. Okay, it's a great, great-looking project. Let's keep it moving. Sounds good. Okay, continued until, you want September 10th? Or do you want August 27th?
Depends. I, we haven't got the civil review yet yet. They were working on the stormwater, so.
So I can give you August 27th, that you can continue it, or I can give you, just give you straight September 10th?
We can always continue.
Yeah, yeah, why don't we?
As long as you're fine with that.
Try the 27th, and if we run into issues with turnaround, then just continue.
Yeah. Gene, no public comment, correct?
Yep.
All right, so yeah, I think we're fine with that. Okay, continued until August 27th.
Thank you. Great. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Discussion item, planning board overview of ADU Open Forum held July 29th through July 24th. Peter, you want to fill everyone in? You want me to fill everyone in?
Aton was the star of the show.
I don't know about that.
We had 10 people show up, which was actually better than it sounds because there was a good dialogue after we turned the cameras on.
We gave a presentation, which is up on YouTube. You can watch it. It was very informative, and we had some good conversations. I think, so the ADU bylaw has passed in the state?
Yep.
So we have, our ADU law has passed in the state. It was signed by the governor, so it's coming. Some interesting questions. I think one of the most interesting questions and what I'm going to, so the law's passed, but we're going to get guidelines. And one of the things I'm, a couple of things I'm interested in are, one, so the law says nine hundred square feet or fifty percent of the.
I think twenty-five.
Or twenty-five percent of the floor area, whichever is smaller, right? But could, can, are we allowed to set our number at anything different than that? Like, I think the first thing we're going to have to do is figure out what we're allowed to do, and then figure out what we want to do. It doesn't make sense to figure out what we want to do if we're not allowed to do it. So I think we need to figure out what we're allowed to do. So like, are we allowed to do more? Are we allowed to do less? Are we, when can we require special permits? We have our family suite laws, and there was a question raised by the ZBA chair about, should we keep arguing to keep the family suite? I'm curious to see if the state will allow that, or if they say that sometimes when a state, when the state has acted within zoning, they preempt our local laws. So would they consider this preempted in saying, no, you have to go with this? You can't have both an ADU bylaw and a family suite bylaw that allows for different things? I don't know the answer to that. And if we're allowed to keep both, should we keep both? Should we make changes to the family suite in addition to having the ADU bylaw? So those are the things we're going to have to kind of address. But the law itself as written doesn't require owner occupancy, doesn't require attached versus detached. It can be either. No requirements about any type of look or feel similar to what our family suite law has. So it does open things up a bit, and we'll have to see.
Did you mention the question about trailers?
Nope, nope. Yeah, I mean, can you put a, can you put a trailer? Can you put a, you know, a cart from a railroad cart, you know, like a modified?
A shipping container.
Shipping container. I mean, we, I mean, are these things that people would want to do, or can they do, and?
Or some type of tent structure, like a uric.
Yeah.
From a zoning perspective, the state's law still required it to meet our, as long as it meets our local zoning setbacks.
It has to meet all setbacks and things like that.
Okay.
It has to meet setbacks, but as long as it, you know, has a part, one allocated parking spot, you could put, you know, there are things you could put in there that might not be attractive, or you can do it.
Right.
As long as it meets all the setbacks and stuff like that.
And we asked if there was interest in another meeting, and it was pretty resound. And we asked if there was interest in another meeting, and it was pretty resoundingly not until we know what the rules are.
So, to be determined what the rules are, and then how we'll move forward. Whether we have something for this year, I would think it would be tough to have all the guidelines and then have something in place by May, but we'll see, we'll just wait and see what's required.
Do you think it was worth doing?
Yes, I did, I thought there were things that, at least for me personally, and I'm glad, I think people enjoyed the information, for me, I got value in the, in the questions, and starting to think about some of those questions as we move forward, and questions that, when we get the guidelines, there may be more questions that we can ask and send back to the state and say, hey, we heard this, but we have the following questions.
I agree with you, and, you know, working with Brian is so easy, that this was a light lift for us, and I want to thank NA CAM, doing a great job, thanks for the help.
And I think it's something to model in the future, if there's a topic that anybody's interested in, right? If we want to do one on the lake and lake testing, if we want to do something about...
Why are you looking at me?
I don't know.
Yeah, he's still looking at the harbor visitor.
No, no.
I would love to do that, by the way.
Right, but if there's, or if this is a topic about, an interesting topic that you think is coming up or you want to discuss, we can go on North End or A CAM and we can kind of do it and get feedback.
Is there a timeline or a deadline that we need to have this bylaw intact?
That's going to be part of the guidelines, we don't know yet.
The legislation says it becomes effective in 180 days, which puts it in mid-February, but, again, not quite sure, but effective means if we don't have rules and guidelines.
I mean, we can't, we literally can't put a bylaw, I mean, unless we had a special town meeting, right?
Right.
So they're not going to expect you to have a special town meeting to enact something, but I don't, who knows, who knows what's, yeah, we don't know yet.
Okay, can we get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from July 16th?
So moved.
Can you get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Sorry I'm late.
All in favor? Aye. All right. Bye, John.